Shall we start and you can join us?
That's fine.
Yeah.
Uh, we'll open the meeting with a pledge of allegiance. Are you able to put the flag up for us? Thank you. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public.
We wish you the best.
One nation.
Thank you, Heather. Okay, thanks for the notifications. And for public comments, I believe if you type your name in the chat box, we will unmute you and you can ask a question or comment on agenda items. There's the instructions for the chat feature. Wait a moment, see if I have any questions or comments.
There's nothing in the chat box.
Okay, thank you. The next item on the agenda would be the approval of the minutes of May 28th meeting.
Motion approved.
Second.
The motion is second. Any discussion or comments? Questions? Is Carolyn on to do roll call or is she able to?
He is on, although we were working to try to get her audio to work properly. She is on via phone, so I don't know if she is able to respond for roll call. We'll give her a second and see.
Okay.
We know her phone. She's usually Caroline.
She's using a district phone, so you probably will see her there.
There is a district phone.
Mary Jean's unmuting her.
She's unmuted.
Carolyn, can you hear us? Okay. Okay, why don't you go ahead and take it, Phil?
Okay. Holly Arnold?
Yes.
Uh, is Lori on yet? Okay, we'll skip Lori. Shayna?
Yes.
Uh, Dr. Pabola?
Yes.
Uh, Bill Slowly?
Yes.
John Burke?
Yes.
Bill Widener?
Yes.
And myself is a yes. Thank you. Uh, superintendent's report, Heather.
Um, prior to that, uh, we did hold executive sessions and it should reflect that.
Uh, this is session on Monday and on the 10th, which was last night, Wednesday, regarding personnel and pandemic issues. Thank you for reminding me, Heather.
You're welcome. So underneath my report, I need a motion to approve item one.
Motion approved.
Second. Okay, thank you, Bill. A motion and second. Do we have any discussion?
She was a great worker. I was able to work several years alongside of her.
Nice to hear that, Bill. Anybody else? Okay, do a roll call. Uh, Holly Arnold?
Yes.
Uh, Shayna Gregory?
Yes.
Uh, Bill Pabola?
Yes.
Uh, Bill Slowly?
Yes.
John Burke?
Yes.
Bill Widener?
Yes.
And myself is a yes. Thank you. Uh, committee reports. Do we have any committees that met? I'm not aware of.
Yep. Building and grounds met.
You're right. That's, thank you.
And extracurricular.
Extracurricular met.
Okay. Uh, does somebody want to give a report on buildings and grounds? Shane, would you like to do that or?
Sure. So during the building and grounds committee meeting, we met to discuss a couple of items. We gave an update on the bond, which will be utilized to begin the roofing project. We anticipate that work to begin next week, so we are moving ahead and we're looking forward to getting that work accomplished. We also discussed the status of buildings across the district, both outside activities as well as facility usage. And based on the information that we had at that time, the decision was made that we would keep buildings closed to public activity until July 1. The building and facilities committee agreed that, building and grounds agreed that we would reconnect on Tuesday, the 23rd to revisit that. So recognizing that we're in a time where there are frequent changes, we felt like we only wanted to make a decision that looked out a few weeks, knowing that we were, at that time, we had not yet been declared green. So we wanted to reevaluate that later this month. I think those were the key things that we discussed. Any other members that were present, if you have anything else that you'd like to add, please do so.
Shane, did we say they were going to try to do all of the roofs this summer?
At this point in time, we're planning to do the intermediate center. So I will circle back with John Sapolsky, but I believe at this time, the intermediate center is our primary focus.
Okay, thanks.
You bet.
Anybody else? Okay, Heather, did you have something?
Yeah, prior, I just wanted to give the community an update on graduation, so.
Now, Heather, I apologize.
Oh, okay.
I, I, I just want to give a brief reporter, Todd wants to talk about the extracurricular committee meeting, which we had. It was very brief. There were some interruptions and we had to terminate the meeting, but we did talk about, and Todd, if you want to say something or, Mr. Bossher, if you want to say something, if you want me to say, I'll be fine. Well, let me, let me just say what, what we talked about with the athletic director, the principal, Ms. McPherson was there and our extracurricular committee met. And it was just like Shane said, we're just looking, we were just looking out to see how we can establish guidelines once the state and the PIAA would allow extracurricular and athletic events to take place. With that, we do have some new information. As Shane said, this changes every few days, so I will propose later that we want to try to get an extracurricular meeting next week to discuss the guidelines, but maybe I can say something later after Heather, after you go.
Bill, why don't, if you want, you can talk about that now.
Phil, is that okay if I just?
That's fine.
Talk a little bit about this? Okay. As you all know, and I've probably received 10 or 12 phone calls and texts and emails from coaches and community members, the PIAA and the governor's office have now allowed school districts to establish their own return to play, so to speak, guidelines following health and safety measures proposed by CDC, Department of Health. What we are working on, and I, I've been speaking to Mr. Bossher, Ms. McPherson, Mr. Janeski, and we are trying to put our individual set of guidelines together. The rule is that each district has to come up with the guidelines of how we're going to safely return the student athletes, coaches and staff to either facilities and/or fields and/or weight room, following the guidelines. The good thing is, is now we're in the green phase. There are other districts that are working diligently to try to set up their own set of guidelines. There are certain frameworks out there that we can use, but it has to be obviously specific to Tuncanic. So with that being said, I know the buildings and grounds will be working closely with the district and I think extracurricular has to work closely with buildings and grounds on how we move forward. I did share with Heather and with Todd and Kenny the outline and some preliminary guidelines, a waiver form that will have to be signed, educational programs following the current guidelines in the green phase or the recommendations by the governor currently in the reopening green phase. So with that being said, they're very preliminary. I, I believe Ms. McPherson sent that to the board late this afternoon. I am not asking for anything other than if there are any questions, but my proposal to the extracurricular committee would be to set up a meeting next week after Mr. Bossher, Mr. Janeski, Ms. McPherson really work out the nuts and bolts of how our facilities are able to handle the implementation guidelines, how we're going to educate the community and the staff. And then, once we come up with this at the extracurricular level, then we will submit something, it has to be board approved and then post it on the website before we can actually implement our reopening guidelines. So if there are any questions, I'd be happy to field any questions. It's just too early right now to try to implement something because I think there's a lot of, oh, I guess, facilities work and coordination with buildings and grounds and administration to get this done. Bill, the only question, Bill, the only question I had is, this is brief, on the screening checklist that you sent out, it had listed 100 and I had been using 100.4. Is that a new CDC guideline? Is the 100? It is not. It is not. That's either a typo or the guideline I got it off of may have been 100, 100.0. I'm going to go back and check, but it is 100.4. I did recheck our data.
Bill, I have a question. It's Lori.
Lori's on the line.
I did not get to check my email yet today, but you said a letter went out from Heather to the committee or to the?
I'll, I'll hold up. There were three attachments.
Okay.
The three, there are three attachments. One is a, a template of a guideline to return to play with Tuncanic area school district. The other one is a waiver form that we're going to have to have parents sign because of the COVID pandemic. And the other one was just a simple questionnaire that the coaches and the activities people will have to screen. There, there are several questions that healthcare providers especially and even businesses, they can ask. These are the questions, including fever, does the participant or coach have a fever, a cough, shortness of breath, any COVID exposure, loss of taste or smell, travel outside the USA? And then, of course, like Mr. Burke said, the, every practice, every event, there has to be these screening questions for every participant and the temperature has to be taken. That's in the proposed guidelines.
Okay, okay. Thanks, Bill.
So I'll just say that I think Mr. Bossher and Mr. Janeski and Ms. McPherson and myself and the extracurricular folks will try to work on putting something together and have it sent out to the board. Once we take a look at it and we feel it conforms to, and Heather, you've been in touch with other superintendents with all this, so we want to make sure we're doing it the right way. Listen, health and safety of the kids, the staff and the community is number one. And I'm a little overzealous. I want to get started. I know people out in the community want to get started, but we want to make sure we're doing it safely.
Okay, are we going to meet, is the committee with Todd and Heather and Kenny going to meet now that we're going green in person? Or are we going to meet via Zoom?
I, I'm okay with meeting in person as long as we social distance. It's a, it's a small group. I don't know. I didn't really think that far out, to be honest with you.
Okay. All right. It doesn't matter to me. I just don't want to miss a meeting whether we're doing it via virtual or?
I think we can decide that and we could discuss that. We could discuss that with Todd and Heather and see, see what administration and how they want to handle it.
Okay.
Heather, been any thought now that we've got some ideas of what the athletics aspect will look like, particularly during football season? Are we going to have a marching band? Are we not going to have a marching band? Is it going to be limited? I'm just, you know?
Holly, Heather, may I answer? I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I've had, and I'm so sorry. That's a great question. I'm going to be honest with you. I have spoken to other school board folks from the Wyoming Valley Conference, other coaches and ADs, and that is up in the air still because things can change, Holly. Right now, we're in the green phase and right now, we're, we're, our guidelines are based on what the current recommendations are. So our current green phase is 250 people per gathering. The guidelines outline that a sporting event, there are different tiers of participants. The first tier, of course, are the players and the coaches and the officials. The next tier are the media people. And then, the next tier up to the building 50% occupancy capacity would be spectators and vendors.
But even that 50% is still only 250 right now, right?
Well, in, in, in a building, that's right. Outside, I mean, our stadium, of course, and I believe sidelines at Roslyn or anything like that would hold more than, than that, but it still is at 250. So a lot of people are just putting in guidelines right now and at the end of the guidelines, there's the generic statement that this can change pending any regulatory changes. I mean, we could go back into the yellow face or the governor can open it up to even, you know, just totally open. It really depends on what the current accepted guidelines are. But it's a great question. There's no really great answer in, on June 11th or what's going to happen on August 23rd.
Yeah, part of the, I've been getting asked by parents of band students, not so much that they have a, you know, they have a demand one way or the other, but, you know, they want to know for planning purposes, you know, are they having band camp in, you know, five weeks or whatever it is from now? Which, if there's not a marching band, I'm guessing that there would really be no need for band camp. So that's, I told them I'd ask tonight. It seems like now would be just as good a time. So that's what prompted the question.
That's a great question and I think the answer is going to be, as we work closely with the administration on the current guidelines, if band wants to get together, they're going to have to follow the guidelines and they're going to have to, I guess, get it okay, different fields, different schedules. Obviously, not everybody can show up at the same time at one field and, and break the 250 rule. But I think that's a nuts and bolts question, but the guidelines are to open up all extracurricular activities. And I think we, at the extracurricular level, have to talk about how we're going to handle scheduling and cleaning of bathrooms, cleaning of any used equipment, how we're going to educate the coaches, do we have enough hand sanitizer? You know, how, the guidelines we have, if feasible, we're going to be cleaning the balls in between, say, every 10 minutes. Those are all things that are in the guidelines. No sharing water bottles, no shared water station, no shared towels. Each individual has to have their own individual water bottle. So this is all in the, the coaches and the staff and the team and the parents and the community education.
One of the challenging things would be, I mean, when middle come through August, we may still be in a situation where we can't have marching band for the first home game or second home game. But since this is a fluid situation, we don't know what it will be come September, October timeframe, when we still have games going on. I mean, that's a challenge to have to deal with. I mean.
Exactly.
Maybe there's some kind of band camp to some extent, or maybe they think it's not a good idea. They have to look at that and figure it out.
Uh, in the guidelines, there's a paragraph in there that the administration will deal with some of these questions on a case by case basis.
And, and I, and I have not heard any discussion about, about that, Holly, but I will ask at the next superintendent's meeting if that's been discussed in any district and what, what their plan is, so I can start getting a feel for that. That happened yesterday with the athletics. My phone started just blowing up last night with texts from other superintendents. And so I expect, I will have a band night too. And, but we're, we're going to work it out. We're going to, we're going to make it happen because that's what we do.
We have a great band, so I'm sure that.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Get together and eager to be playing. Just how do we do it correctly, accurately, correctly?
Yep.
Safely. Okay.
So Bill, Bill, do you want to try to schedule that meeting? Do you want to try to get a date now or?
Yeah. Um, I know it's myself, Lori and Rob, and Rob's not here. We can reach out to him. I don't know what, what Todd and Kenny, your schedule, does it look? I just can't do next Wednesday, but I was thinking, will Thursday be enough time to gather the information based on the outline that we have, Todd? So you can talk to John Sapolsky and just see what the, the cleaning situation will be and, and think out some nuts and bolts?
I, I, I think, I think it might, yeah, we, we can have enough information to talk about next Thursday. Don't you think, Shane?
Yes.
Yeah, I think we have enough information that we should start the conversation as soon as we can and next Thursday is probably a good one.
So, so the, the goal of next Thursday, of course, would, we'd have to try to coordinate with buildings and grounds, at least that's kind of what I'm hearing.
Mr. Pabola?
Yes, sir.
It's Bill Widener. On the 23rd, Buildings and Grounds has a meeting at 7 o'clock. Could, that'd be the following Tuesday after that. Could your meeting start at 6:30 and we could all meet together and be socially distant and work things out?
I don't know if you can have a combined meeting with that number of board members. I'm not sure.
I think that's a forum.
Well, committee meetings are fine as long as they're advertised. We can, we could all be there. So there's no limit to that.
Yeah, you've been doing it all, all along with the building and grounds.
So, so next Thursday is what date?
Next Thursday. Is the 18th.
The 18th.
And we're meeting on the 23rd, Bill. We're currently scheduled 23rd at 7:00 PM for Buildings and Grounds.
Right. That's what I said.
Do we want to move Building and Grounds?
I mean, are you suggesting, guys? Are you suggesting that the extracurricular meet the same day, that following Tuesday? I mean, I can, we could do that if that, if that's okay with Mr. Bossher and Heather and Kenny and, and Lori and Rob. I'm fine with that.
And not give them enough time to advertise in the whole nine yards.
That's fine. So what time do you want to, do you want us to do, go the half an hour earlier for the extracurricular and then the Buildings and Grounds will follow or at this concurrent? How do you want to do this, guys?
I mean, personally, I'd prefer to make them concurrent as long as there's not an issue with, you know, attendance of board members and so on and so forth. So, you know, if we feel like that is satisfied by advertising the meeting, then I'm perfectly fine with combining the two. I think the, you know, the discussion and the, you know, the, the content of it, I think overlaps. So I think it's natural for those two to be together.
I think that would be a good idea.
So 2:23 is, is that Tuesday, correct?
6:23, but yeah.
I'm sorry. Yeah, sorry about that. 6:23. I got the twos mixed up. And 7:00 PM?
6:30, I think, for.
We had 7:00.
Athletic committee.
That is seven.
7 o'clock for Buildings and Grounds.
Well, I think we're just going to do them all starting at 7. They're just going to kind of mix together.
Okay.
That was my understanding.
All right, that's fine. And we're going to do it in person?
Absolutely.
I think we need to go back to that.
I, here's, here.
What do you think, Heather? What do you think?
Um, my concern is if a large number of people show up. And then I can't, unless, you know, I plan it in the gym, I can't socially distance in a conference room.
No, I was picturing that we'd at least have it in the library, if not the auditorium, like to have the space if we're all, if, if a good, a number of us are going to be there anyway. Because I would think extracurricular might actually have a lot of interest for people. So there is a chance.
Definitely.
I, I would plan it for, you know, hey, if it's a nice day, let's just tell everybody to bring lawn chairs and have it outside.
Whatever the board wants to do, we'll accommodate.
Should we try the library then?
I would not recommend the library. I don't think that, I, I think just based on the number of coaches who were present when we did the extracurricular, we will not be able to reasonably distance ourselves in the library. I think an auditorium is perfectly fine. You know, if we want to try to do it as a, you know, an in-person event, I would recommend the auditorium.
Okay.
That sounds like a good one.
Okay.
Okay. So what's, what is, Bill, does your schedule drive the 7 o'clock timing? Just because we're going to add a, a bunch of stuff to this agenda. I heard you say 6:30. Can we start earlier than 7:00 or not?
I just said 6:30 for that one if it wasn't going to take long, but it, I'll work with whatever.
But what's the earliest that works for you, Bill?
Right.
6:30, I have to push it. I have to make sure I can get out at 5:00.
Okay, can we shoot for 6:30 then just because unless anybody cares? Let's try to start about 6:30.
Okay. I'll give it a shot.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bill.
Todd, I also, I also think it's really critical that Charlotte be in on this meeting. So would you please make sure that she's included? Thank you. And we're doing high school auditorium?
Yeah.
Yeah, we can, let's say that for right now. I mean, I, I'll talk to John Sapolsky and just make sure that that's the preferred of the two.
Okay. Just keep us posted.
I'm sure.
Yep, whichever one is most likely to be cooler if it's 1,000 degrees outside.
Yeah, you know, roll the dice.
The above? Okay, anything else for the extracurricular?
Nope, thank you.
Heather, I, you were going to, I think, talk about graduation?
Yeah, I, I'm going to share my screen again real quick. I just have a couple slides. So I just wanted to give a community update on where we were with graduation and just some of the logistics. I'm not going to go too deep in the weeds here because tomorrow, Mr. Bossher will be pushing out a Todd talk to the seniors and their parents that'll get more of the detail to the kids and actually provide them with a way to follow through on some of the things I'm going to talk about. So the, on June 19th, 2020, there'll be three outdoor ceremonies. Each of the students will receive three tickets. They will be color coded for each ceremony and there'll be 56 graduates per ceremony. So we'll be able to stay within the 250, the way that we, that we have it mapped out. And those ceremony times will be at 10:00 AM and 2:30 PM and 7:00 PM that Friday night. And the reason that they're so spread apart is I want to assure the community that gives us enough time to clean, to sanitize the, the grandstand, to sanitize the bathrooms, to make sure the kids' seats have been wiped down and hopefully they'll be sitting in the sunshine and we feel very comfortable with that, that timing. So this is just some of the logistics of this. Just, I'm just trying to give parents an idea to wrap their head around, so they just can sort of picture it. All right, so both gates are going to be open and both gates will have ticket takers, but only people with tickets are going to be admitted. And so, so if you have a ticket, you can come in, but we really had to limit it. We're going to adhere to the CDC social distancing guidelines. So we will have the bleachers marked off so that you know where to sit. You can pick where you want to sit, but you know whether you're socially distanced from the, the next people. And each ceremony will be live streamed. We know that there are a number, that three tickets isn't a lot. And so we'll be live streaming each ceremony and then we'll be splicing it all together for the kids to have at the end, after we've done the third one. So when we're, we're ready to leave, students are going to recess to their cars. So we'll do the recessional, they'll reunite with their families and then the stuff that they would typically have picked up at the concession stand, their actual diplomas, their medical records, all of that stuff, that's going to be available at the high school. So they're going to proceed to the high school and they'll pick up those things there after the ceremony. A mask are required and they're to be worn in the stadium, except if you're a speaker and you are getting up to give a speech, then you may take your mask off. And we're also allowing the graduates to take their mask off as, as they prepare to come on stage so that they can have a picture taken with their diploma without a mask. And we asked that they don't take contact except with family members. And those are, those are basically what I'm, what I'm asking you to start picturing and wrapping your head around. So tomorrow morning, Mr. Bossher is going to, I'm going to stop sharing my screen. Tomorrow morning, Mr. Bossher will record a Todd talk specifically about graduation. I am not certain there will be a Tiger TikTok dance, but one never knows. And then he's going to push that out to the kids and it'll be available on the website. So he'll, we'll do an all call. I'll let the kids know it's available and then we'll have links. So the kids are basically going to go in and they are going to register for the ceremony they want so we know and, and how many tickets they want. And the one thing I will say to families. And the one thing I will say to families is if you don't need three tickets, please don't take three tickets. The the numbers are really tight and that's kind of going to determine the number of faculty members that we're going to be able to accommodate. So so please, that's that's an ask of mine to the community. But seniors, we're moving ahead and Mr. Bosher will give you all the details tomorrow. So you can look forward to that. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on to unfinished business.
I just wanted to say real quick that a thank you to administration because this has been a very fluid situation. And we've asked a lot of them in order to give the kids as much of a traditional style graduation as possible. So, you know, as if there wasn't already enough on the plates of everybody. This is a big lift that we're putting on them now, too. So it hasn't been, you know, easy, but it's going to happen. And I'm I'm really proud of Tynecanic because not too many other schools are doing something like this. And I think our kids deserve it.
Yes, they work very hard.
Very much so.
Anybody else? Okay. That's why Bill can't hear you.
Phil, I'm going. You started the next one, which is unfinished business. I moved that we approved the final budget for 2021 with a zero mil increase.
Okay, we have a motion.
And I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. And discussion.
I do have a brief update if you would like me to share that with the group.
Certainly.
Okay, I'm just going to share my screen here. Okay, are you able to see slide?
Yeah.
Yes.
So I just want to provide a real quick update. For those of you who have been on the last several board meetings, we have had several updates relative to the budget, starting back in the April timeframe. On April 23rd, we adopted the proposed final. And over the course of the last month and a half, we have had several iterations and many discussions about how to approach the 2021 budget during these uncertain times. So at the last update, I think we had a deficit of about 1.7 million. We have continued to look at options. And we have also learned that there will be two grants that we know of for sure that will be coming to the district to support some of our COVID reopening plans. So we have been able to make some adjustments and now have a budgeted expense of 49,616,000. The budgeted revenue, we I shared at the last meeting and we have continued to receive consistent feedback at the state level. We anticipate that our basic ed funding, special ed funding will be leveled, which means it will be exactly what we received for 1920. Obviously, there can be some movement in the federal and local level. Local is the one that we're keeping the closest eye on at this point in time. But at this point, we anticipate budgeted revenue of 48,031,000. So what that ends with is a deficit of 1.8 or 1.5 million dollars. We anticipate that at the end of this year, we are estimating that the fund balance will be approximately 4 million. So we still have a couple more months. Well, we have the rest of June. But obviously, we do accrue back, so we have to kind of monitor expenses over the next two months to really see exactly where that fund balance ends up. But assuming we were to be at the $4 million level, we would have an ending fund balance at the end of the academic year 2021 of 2.4 million. So just wanted to make sure that everyone had that update. Now, Mr. Swilly has already motioned for a particular option here. But we did want to make sure that we at least brought this forward to the group. There are three options that we typically present during each year's budget review. And we present a zero mil, one mil, and two mil increase. So what I've shown here is what the resulting impact is to the deficit with each of those adjustments. You can see that the approximate value of a one mil increase to the district is approximately 280,000, $285,000 in revenue. So I just wanted to make sure that everybody had that information. We do have a motion on the floor, but I would certainly be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions for Shane?
If by
Go ahead, Bill.
If by chance any of those numbers change a great deal after we pass this motion or whatever, do we have to redo it or just amend it?
So I we can, we have until June 30th to submit. So we could still make adjustments if we needed to. So we are going to upload whatever is passed this evening. However, to your point, if we were to have a significant change or modification that was brought to our attention over the next several weeks, we do still have the opportunity to make an adjustment if needed. We have another board meeting on the 25th. So if if we had to, we we could certainly make adjustments at that time.
All right, thank you.
Okay, and we're not we're not expecting to know how those numbers are going to trend by June 30th. We have no, we're not expecting that. We're not expecting to know until the fall.
I don't have a question, but just a couple of comments. I want to thank the administration for putting us in this position of being able to handle coming into this year. So that's the whole point of having a fund balance. And so the work that's gone on over the last couple of years has been some really tough choices. And so I want to thank Heather and Shane and Mary Jean and the rest of the administration, as well as our staff for the work that's happened specifically on consolidation. So that kept our fund balance at about this $4 million level, which is around the guidance of about a 10% of your operating budget to keep in a surplus. And so that's where we've been able to maintain. And that was not the picture four or five years ago in this district. And so I'm thankful that we have that because that allows us to hopefully operate somewhat as normal without having to do some major cuts or things like that coming into this year. So obviously, we're going to need to watch especially those local revenues, see how the tax receipts come in. And I also, as we've discussed before, we have other identified items in case we would need to pull the trigger. So I want to give administration credit for doing that work. Originally, this budget was about a $2.5 million deficit and they cut about a million out of it to get us now to about that $1.5 million range. So I'm happy to see that and thankful for all the work that's gone on over the last couple of years to set us up to get through a crazy year, probably like that'll be coming up.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
If I could, I'd like to just note that the deal goes on the sale of the two elementary schools today. So those funds are included in the balance that Shane has spoken about.
Right, they will be in the revenue on the 1920, so that helps with the fund balance for sure.
Anybody else?
Well, real quick, by doing a zero millage, we're helping out those people again that need it. And that's the people we represent. And that's why I went with a zero mil. I know we could use the money and be nice to have, but they can't afford it.
Yep, yeah, we're in trying times right now. And so trying to keep our expenses as tight as we possibly can this year due to what you said, Bill. I totally agree with. So that's something we'll have to take a look at where we are and and see where we go next year. But for this year, I totally agree. We're in we're in a position to try to keep the community not paying more taxes this year.
Anybody else?
No, I just want to assure the board that we will continue to be diligent about opportunities to save in the coming months. I think we've done a very good job of that over the past two or three years and we will continue to be vigilant.
Okay, I have one question. We also will need to pass the Homestead exclusion resolution. As a separate motion?
Let's include that as a separate motion. I'm not sure if Carolyn is able to give input. I'm not sure how we've done that in years past.
I think it's really been
It's been a separate resolution.
Yeah, it was two.
It was included. So certainly, the resolution is prepared. So why don't we go ahead and have a motion to pass that resolution as well? So that we can make sure that both of these are on record separately.
So moved.
Second.
So we're voting on, we're incorporating both of these in one vote?
Yes.
Okay.
They kind of go hand in hand anyway.
Yep, yep.
Okay, all right. If there are no other questions or comments, we'll go with a roll call. Holly Arnold?
Yes.
Lloyd Bennett?
Yes.
Shannon Gregory?
Yes.
Bill Pabola?
Yes.
Bill Swilly?
Yes.
John Burke?
Yes.
Bill Widener?
Yes.
And myself is a yes, and I'm glad we can do that this year.
And that was for zero mil budget plus the Homestead Act, correct?
Correct.
That's correct.
Okay, just to make sure it was clear.
Okay.
Bill, I'd like to say one thing now that we have the vote. I want to thank the board. And obviously, administration works with the board and the board works with administration. But I got to tell you, there are so many boards that are so dysfunctional around this state and even within our location that I think this is a great thing. I think everybody in the community heard that the district is working with administration. We're working to keep the the best education possible and we're trying to keep the costs down. But I think it's a refreshing thing and I I only hear stories from other boards. But I just want to thank my board members, my co-board members. I think it's great and we are working together. And I think that's it's a pleasure to work with you guys and gals.
Thank you, Bill.
Thanks. I just I just want to pipe in for a second, Dr. Pabola, because if you think back to the first year that I was here, I think what I said to you is this organization will only only ever be as healthy as this board is.
And I think I think we're all working the best we can and and we are in trying times. And we were in trying times when we were doing consolidation. How many meetings did we have? And now this hits us. So I just think it's, you know, when I'm calling them to Zoom meetings, I'm not a technology guy. I like the in-person stuff, but I look forward to the meetings. I really do.
And to back to what John Burke said earlier, five, six years ago, we were anticipating and projections that we would need full act. One increases every year without end and still be behind our expenses. I mean, so expenses have turned around considerably thanks to the administration. There's been a lot of hard work there and we've been able to maintain programs with that time. Cut out a lot of waste. So we appreciate the administration for being able to do that while maintaining programs. Thank you. Okay, are there any other public comments?
Yes, the first one, yeah, the first. Go ahead, Bill Widener.
Oh, go. What I wanted to say is from now on, seeing we'll be moving to the green, I would like to make sure that all our meetings from now on that we meet in person. It's a heck of a lot easier than trying to do this over the phone and stuff.
I'm fine with meeting in person.
Group of one.
I prefer the in-person myself, if we can do it.
I don't see why we can't do it in the auditorium.
We can all meet and we can give high fives and then Heather will have Seberg coming after us because we're not maintaining social distancing, right, Heather?
Right off.
Well, let's let the administration get through with graduation first and then we can tackle the next problem. They've got their hands full right now.
Sounds good.
But I just wanted to put that out there.
We can wait for direction.
Yeah. Do we have anybody else with a question? Mary Jean?
George, I'm trying to unmute him. I'm not sure, George, if you're unable to mute yourself, if you could try to do that.
Could you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, great. So just recently, I just heard one of the board members says, if we can do that. They said something about meeting in person and then the question and then the response was, I'm okay with doing it if we can do that. Did I hear that right? Someone say that?
Yes, if they corrected logistics out.
Okay, so because like the if thing is kind of what I'm calling about. And what I'm talking about is I have a couple of questions. Unlike you guys, I have not navigated a pandemic. And I know you guys didn't either. But being how you guys are about to make decisions for our school district, for my family and me, I want to make sure that I understand that you guys at least have compasses, know which way true north is and maybe have a map in front of you in order to help navigate through this pandemic. So I would really love a roll call, a response to this from the board members and maybe the superintendent and principal. But if we're making decisions, and and these are all guidelines, which are recommendations from the CDC. It's the recommendations and guidelines are not mandatory. It literally says right on their webpage, on the CDC webpage, it just says, implementation should be guided by what is feasible, practical, acceptable, and tailored to the needs of each community, school-based facility, et cetera, et cetera. So these are just guidelines and recommendations. And so my question is going to be, does everybody on the board, the superintendent and the principal, do you guys all know what the recovery rate of COVID-19 is?
Recovery rate is fairly high. I don't know.
Tell me, I would love a roll call so that at least I know you just say I don't know or give me the number. So each board?
I don't think it's, we're going to do a roll call, but you go on with the with your input.
Okay, well, that's very important, actually. And I would expect maybe by next time that we can have that. Because if you guys are making decisions, and this is literally up to you guys, these are recommendations. And the decision is supposed to be made by the school board members. If you don't know what the recovery rate is, I've I've seen three of the highest officials all have three different answers. And it's not good. We need to get educated as a school board member because you guys are making decisions for us. And if you guys don't know, that's not good. Another question would be, what is the percentage of this age group, of the school age group? This age group has been affected by COVID and the amount of energy we're about to spend on this. And I don't know why we can't have a roll call. So people, I want to know what the percentages are. I want to know what the recovery rate is from each individual board member. Is anybody volunteering an answer?
George, let me let me, this is John Burke. You and I have known each other for a long time. This is a developing situation and I'm telling you that we are committed to follow PDE CDC best practice guidelines and adjust them going forward depending what we know. And so what we know today was vastly different eight weeks ago. So I personally know that the recovery rate is, it's probably 98% or higher. I know in this age group, it's almost zero. But it also means that we need to figure out best practices and implement them per the PD and CDC guidelines. So I'm totally on board with what you're saying. We don't want to overreact to this, but we also have at-risk family members, grandparents raising kids, which you know, you and I helped raise them through Cub Scouts together. And I promise you that we're going to take it seriously, but not put ourselves in a position where we're not educating kids and staying home. I am fully committed, as the board is, to get kids back in school again because I think it would be ridiculous to continue what we were doing when we finished last year. But that's because we know so much more than we did in March. Think about what happened in New York City. They were venting everyone because they didn't know that that was probably killing them. And so for we can't make decisions today that are going to be final because what we know now will be different in four weeks.
Well, my question, though, just those two basic questions, and I'm glad that you know, John, you spoke of. I really appreciate that. Thank you very much. But I really think it's important because I've seen the highest officials all have different answers, which means that everybody keeps rolling with the tide and or using old information. They're not staying current. So I expect that those two pieces of information should be current in everybody's own personal mind. They shouldn't be taught down from anybody. Everybody should go search it for themselves, have that open discussion. They get two different numbers. They work it out and find out why they got two different numbers. Because if John Burke just educated you and that's now your new answer, well, that's not good enough. As school board members, you've got to go get these two pieces of information. So it's just because if you got any book a year ago today, any medical training book, it wouldn't say do the things that we're all getting ready to implement. This is definitely something that's that's got us down the wrong path.
George, Bill Pabola here. You and I have coached together. I've coached your kids. You've coached my kid.
Yes, sir.
I'm going to echo what John Burke said. We are all on the same page about moving forward. As you heard tonight, if you were on the meeting, we just got approval from the governor and PIAA to start implementing our own set of guidelines to safely bring extracurriculars back, and we're doing that.
Now, Joe, I did hear that. Thank you. I was on the whole meeting. I appreciate you doing that. I heard that. That was exciting.
So George, George, I sense, I know you're frustrated. There are nine school board members and a whole bunch of people in administration, teachers. We're all frustrated, but we want to do this safely. And I know I can quote a lot of medical literature, but but you're right. The medical literature from six weeks ago is different than The medical literature from six weeks ago is different than what it was last week. So as John Burke said, and we've, we've been saying this all along, this is a fluid situation. We want to make the best decisions. It's not only for the kids, George. I know the survival rate and the illness rate for COVID in kids less than 20 years old is very low. The problem is, we also have a responsibility to protect the parents, at-risk health individuals, and grandparents. Because as you know, George, over 70 years old with two comorbidities, if a patient or an individual gets infected, there's a high likelihood of hospitalization and a high mortality rate. So we're trying to make decisions that not only protect the kids, the staff, and anybody in interaction, but also the community members. So we're trying to make it the best decisions that we can. But we're all frustrated, George. Everybody on this meeting is frustrated.
All right, I appreciate that, and, and I expect that you guys will work the way you're saying you're going to work. Just know, I'm probably, I don't know how much more time I'll have, but the last thing is that the, the level of mental anguish that you're about to unleash on the kids with this whole idea that their mere presence could be asymptomatic and kill somebody else's grandmother, to live with that as a kid, because one day they're going to ask, Mommy, why are we doing this? The mental anguish that we're about to put on each one of our kids, right down from the little kids to the oldest kids, to move forward in their lifetime, to believe that their mere presence somehow can kill somebody is a wild, wild mental anguish to put on them. So I hope you guys do your own education or get yourselves schooled up on this. And this whole idea that you're eight, could be asymptomatic, and you could pass a germ is literally not the way forward, because one year from now, I can charge you with that. You're asymptomatic right now for something you don't even know you have. We can't move forward, you can't live like that, you can't be that, that fearful. So I really hope you all make really hard decisions for us, because we won't be wearing masks as the U-Hauses anywhere or anything. We won't, that's just not going to work for us, because I will not be doing tricks like a dog just because somehow someone thinks that's the right thing to do, when a year ago, it was the wrong thing. We can't change masks every 20 minutes when they get wet, so why are we wearing them? You know, so this can, this is, it's not going to work for us. So when you see us, don't be bothering us with some silly mask things.
So that, just to put a close on that, George, I, what we're going to learn on this in the next eight weeks will be different. And, and I'm committed, and I know that I can speak with the administration, that they're committed to make sure we're following whatever the, the latest knowledge is. I do agree that what we know about asymptomatic transmission is different today than it was eight weeks ago. And, and the medical professionals are confused themselves. I mean, I'm sure you read the article, the WHO issued initial guidance that it was very low probability. They backtrack that. And so my hope is, is over the next couple of weeks, we'll know a lot more that'll help guide the decisions that we have, because we want to be able to educate kids as best we can, keep them safe, and, and also that, you know, nobody's here to put a stigma that they're going to kill somebody else. And so hopefully, we'll figure out the whole asymptomatic thing here over the next couple of weeks and be ready for the fall.
Yeah, no, no one, you guys aren't going to do it on purpose. It's just going to happen by the nature of the beast. And remember, guys, it's all recommendations. Go get yourselves educated, make sure we all make the best call. And this, this graduation, don't make masks mandatory, whatever you do, because they can't be mandatory. Don't be skirting for around people's liberties and constitutional rights either, because that's exactly what you'll be doing, because it's not law, it's not mandatory, it's only recommended.
Thanks, George.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else?
Yeah, we have Mike Barbini. You're unmuted.
Hi, can you hear me? Yes, you can. Um, I just wanted, my hearing's not what it used to be. Did, Heather, did you say the kids can put in for a recommended time that they would like the graduation ceremony?
Yeah, um, so that, that link will be released tomorrow with Mr. Boshers Todd Talk. He pushes that out to the kids, they'll get the link then.
Okay, I'm sorry for bothering you guys with the bad hearing.
No, that's fine, that's fine.
Anybody else?
The last person we have is Alicia. Alicia, I've unmuted you if you want to mute yourself.
My question is, have you, there are several schools that are graduating from the PNC field. Students are distant six feet apart. They're allowed three tickets per student, and then they're dismissed. There's plenty of social distancing. Also, last week, Wielu sting had a normal graduation. Kids were distanced six feet apart. They had two tickets per student. And, I mean, these kids have worked so hard. For them to have one-third of their class only graduate with them, I'm sorry. I know so many seniors that are so upset about this. I, I think it's really unfair.
I, I'll speak up and say, like, I was a big proponent of having an in-person graduation, and it didn't even look like that was going to be likely until things started turning green. Anybody who knows me personally knows that I, I'm not a proponent of any of this yellow, green, red nonsense. However, as a school district, for liability reasons and other reasons, we have to follow the rules as they sit right now to the best of our ability. So I personally am not going to speak to any others. What, I'm not going to speak to, it actually says prohibited gatherings over 250 people for any reason. Because even two weeks ago, it didn't say that. It said for, for entertainment purposes, you couldn't have people more than 250. And in my mind, that was a green light too. Well, this is not an entertainment purpose. We can, we can do this, we can social distance, we can use both sides of the stadium, we can do all these things. And then our illustrious governor changed it to where any planned or impromptu gatherings couldn't be over 250. So like I was saying, I can't speak to what any other school district did, or where they went, or how they did it. But if we're going to be doing something, you know, for, even if it's just for liability reasons, we, we need to stick to the 250.
Okay, you want to say about the governor, the governor, it's okay for him to walk through a crowd of protesting people, and that's okay.
That's irrelevant.
It's over 250 people. No, it is relevant.
It's not relevant to what is.
It is absolutely relevant.
Then you need to take that up with him. We can't change him, as much as we might like.
And everyone can protest, and there's over.
Yeah, we, you know, we, we appreciate what you're saying, and we, we've had discussions. And the other option was a virtual or a drive-by. And we, as a board and administration, really wanted to do the best we can for the kids in the live graduation. I will tell you that, that I know there's frustration in the community. There's frustration in my family, because my son is graduating, and I've spoken to him. And I, I apologize, but it's, I believe this is the best thing that we can do, taking into account everything that's happening and all the rules and regulations that we're trying to follow. It's not the best, the best would have been a, a normal year. Everybody would have gone to school, they could have had their appropriate hugs and kisses at the end of the year. But we're doing the best we can with this plan that Heather and the administrators came up with.
I think, I think the vast majority of the board, if it was just the liability on our own shoulders individually, we would be saying, you know what, we're, we're, we're having a graduation, and let them stop us if they want to try. But that, that's just not logically how it works when you're talking about this as a, you know, an organization. We can't, it can't be like that, because that goes against our responsibility as board members.
Phil, Bob Baker has a question. Bob, you're unmuted, if you want to unmute yourself. You should be able to unmute yourself. If you go down to the left side of your screen, there's a microphone. It'll have a red slash through it. If you just hit that, it should unmute you. Bob, you know, I, you're, we're having, I guess you're having technical difficulty. I see your hand raised, you want to put your question in the chat box, and I can read it for you.
Bob knows we're not trying to suppress the press, right?
He lowered his hand, so I'm assuming, Bob, down at the bottom, if you scroll your mouse over the bottom of your screen, you'll see some options down there. One says chat. If you click on that, you could type in the chat box.
Finally found it. Hey.
Hey, Bob.
Okay, now. The bond issue, is it a $5 million?
Yes, it is.
Okay, and I did, I, I kind of got garbled where your building and grounds meeting is going to be. Is it the intermediate center or high school?
As of right now, it's at the high school.
Okay, that's it, thank you, sorry to be a pain.
No problem, thanks, Bob.
John Burke, you're muted.
So we have one more, Joanne. She's asking, Mr. Boshier, Heather, um, this is a logistical question. She has a set of twins that is graduating. Do both twins need to go down tomorrow to pick a time slot, or can one of them do it for both of them? One can do it for both of them, you just have to fill out two. They have to fill out two forms, one per graduate, but one person can do both of them.
Anybody else?
So I, I guess a, a form has to be filled out in person? I, I kind of missed that.
No, Bill, it's online.
Online, okay. Somebody said they have to go down, okay.
Yeah, and, and then they click on the link, they fill in the information, and then it populates an Excel spreadsheet for us on our end.
Okay, okay. Real quick, I should have mentioned this during the, when we were discussing the bond issuance. Of note, and Bob, I'm not sure if this is relevant, because it's just a little bit more maybe the details, but the first two years of the bond issuance, that interest is very close to zero. And so that was helpful for us, because that's where our higher debt issuance or debt load is today. Because that allows us to not see a spike in the next two years, while obviously, we're getting through a really tough year this year. And so we're able to do those roofs with a very low interest rate and not really incur a big issue with that today. So thanks for, to you Shane and Christine for working through those issues.
Absolutely.
Yeah, interesting that the bond issue, our bank was seeing those, so that we could buy some for the bank. And the cost to the district, I think was, they quoted us around about 2.79% on the overall bond issue. That's going, taken into include years one through 20 years out. When you saw, when we saw the yields on the bonds from the buyer's side, the overall was posted to about a 185 or so overall. So that's the, the difference between that is the cost of issuing the bonds. Anybody, do we have anybody else on the phone, Mary Jean?
We do not.
Okay, then I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Motion adjourned.
So moved.
You have a second. Thank you, everyone.
Have a good night, all.
Yep. Thank you. Good night.